Candidate Forum. I'm Lori Ivy, proud owner of Lori Ivy State Farm right here in Longview. Tonight's forum is brought to you in partnership with the Longview News Journal and Longview Kilbor Cable TV. This event is a vital opportunity for our community to hear directly from the candidates running in the upcoming Longview City Election on May 3rd. We believe informed voters build stronger communities and tonight we're here to listen, learn, and engage in shaping Longview's future. A quick reminder, early voting begins April 22nd and runs through April 29th with multiple locations available this year. For exact times and places, please visit the City of Longview's website and click on the General Elections tab. We're also pleased to share that tonight's forum is live streaming on the Longview News Journal Facebook page and will air on Longview Kilbor Cable TV Channel 26. The recorded version will also be available for later viewing. At the Chamber, we are deeply grateful to our cornerstone investors, 11 dedicated Chamber members who have gone above and beyond to advance the Chamber's mission and move us boldly into the next century. Please join me in thanking Adon Coyle, Badley Tractor, Hoakland Insurance Group, Eastman Chemical Technologies Operations, Eastman Credit Union, Longview Cable TV, Partner Industrial, Starfish, STEM Co., Texas Bank and Trust, and Vera Bank. A special thank you as well to our media sponsors, the Longview News Journal and Longview Tonight's forum features candidates from District 5 and the format, each candidate will have two minutes for opening remarks, two minutes to answer each question, and then two minutes for closing statements. Candidates have been advised that filibustering is not permitted and Randy Ferguson, our moderator, may redirect your responses straight from the question. So I'd like to go ahead and introduce our candidates. We have our incumbent, Michelle Gamboa, and then we have Mr. Jody Berryhill. And with that, I'll turn it over to our moderator, Randy Ferguson, with the Longview News Journal.
Okay, uh, thank you Lori. So we will start with, uh, the, uh, two minutes for the opening remarks and we will start with, uh, Michelle.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. I'm Councilwoman Michelle Gamboa. I also serve as the Mayor Pro-Tech for the City of Longview. I am seeking reelection. I am passionate about our community. I have been heavily involved in our community before being elected, serving on over 10 nonprofit boards. I actually have received the endorsement of our previous Councilmember, David Wright, who actually appointed me to the EMS Board and the Comprehensive Plan Board previously to being elected. I'm running because I love our community so deeply. I want to continue to represent everybody in District 5, continue fighting for critical infrastructure and public safety. Thank you.
All right, Julie.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be at this event. To those of you who don't know me, I'm Jody Berryhill. I've been in Longview for 34 years. I've been a resident of District 5 for 27 years. I had the opportunity to work 31 years in education or six years in leadership as an athletic director. I worked all those years with honesty, integrity, and transparency, making sure that everybody's voices was heard and that you rightfully thought when you were visiting and making decisions regarding people. Uh, one of the things that gets me is if you think the streets are great like they are right now, you probably need to vote for me. If you feel like, uh, our appraisal values have went the direction that you think they will, you probably shouldn't vote for me. The other thing is if, uh, the 2018 bond, if you think the progress on that bond and the progress in the unfinished projects is all right, you gotta, you gotta get away from me because I'm telling you, 2025, my checkbook don't write like it did in 2018. I voted for these bonds. I wanted to see them taken care of. I believe that at City Council, you've gotta be proactive and not reactive. You need to have some financial transparency.
Stop. Oh, thank you. That's all. All right. Okay, uh, for the first question, we will start with, uh, Jody. Can you talk to us about why you are speaking this week on the council?
I retired three years ago and I really thought that I'd enjoy retirement, but in that time, after working 75 to 80 hours a week for over 30 years, I occupied my time into paying attention to things that was happening around me. Uh, I look at all the projects we do, my, my $3,000, my tax money, every time I look at one. And, uh, I just don't feel like financially, we've made some wise decisions here lately. I think weighing on a lot of our bond projects, I know our bonds were issued at different times, but, uh, our bond projects being where they're at right now, that's not acceptable. And if we run business like that for ourselves, we'd be out of business pretty quickly. Uh, I just firmly believe that I've got some age, I've got experience, and the things that I've done in working with budgets, you like working with other people's money lends me to be a great accent for the City of Longview. I can only be one voice, but I'm telling you, it's all right for people to get in a room together and disagree, but when you walk out, you need to be in the grins that you made the right decision for all the citizens of Longview.
Same question for Michelle. Can you talk about why you are seeking reelection again on the council?
I'm seeking reelection because what I heard last time is what I heard now. People did want our 2018 bond project approved, we're actually almost finished with them. We'll be finishing this summer for Panther Park as well as Station 8 is well underway. After talking to various constituents, especially along Hawkins Parkway, I realized there was a safety issue. They tried for years to get that resolved, but they were not successful. However, I worked diligently with our City Managers Office, Tech Dot, there were various studies for weeks to make sure that we got some chevrons installed along that parkway as well as along Spring Hill Road and various other, um, aspects. I also, um, there's a lot of progress to be made in regards to our critical infrastructure, but we're working still on our drainage on Cheryl. We've installed a French drain as well as we're working on how the water runs down that way. There's various neighborhoods as well that have been impacted by our development. Development is positive, however, it comes with growing pains, so there's some things we have to address in regard to general land use. I'm running as well because although we have 12,000 acres in the north business park, we don't have over 100,000 acres of continuous land. So with my experience previously working for other elected officials with constituent outreach, running a small business, um, and being involved in our community partners, I knew that I wanted to have a seat at the table so I could encourage other people to have a seat at the table, work with our community partners, because our job as council members is to be the liaisons between our city and the professionals within our city departments so that we can address any issues that our citizens may have. A core value here of the Chamber as well as workforce and infrastructure, um, and those are some things that I'm focused on privately as a citizen as well as your council member. I'm a proud graduate of Leadership Longview and learning a lot of those tools I've implemented being your council member, but the most important tool I've had is listening to you and casting your vision forward for District 5, and that's making sure we have critical infrastructure and fighting for things like the ambulance I helped install into our district. Thank you.
So the next question, we'll start with Jody. Um, no, I'm sorry, we will start with Michelle on this one. Uh, what do you believe that the role of a council member should be?
The role of a council member should be safety, streets, signs, and sewers, things that affect us all the same. We have two buckets in the City Council, our general fund and our general reserve fund. General reserves are savings. Our role should be focused, making sure that all the critical essential needs are being met. I agree, our streets look terrible. Unfortunately, it's pawpall season and we're running through some barriers, like we're struggling to get asphalt in, but I know we recently got some in, so we're, uh, putting some of those things down. I believe that our job is to listen to what the citizens want their vision to be and that's to make sure that our critical infrastructure is met. I'm working hand in hand with our public safety officers. I'm proud to receive the endorsement of the Longview Professional Firefighters Association because I know that my job is to do the research, to put the groundwork in, to work with the citizens, to connect them to the right department, to make sure that critical work is getting done. There are so many issues going on in District 5 as well as a lot of strengths with development coming, so my job is to be attentive, to be responsive, and to listen to your feedback. That's why I'm proud to say that I always return calls within 24 to 48 hours to my constituents. Um, I can typically get anything done within that timeframe unless it's Tech Dot, you know how Tech Dot works, it might take a little bit longer. So if you know of a Tech Dot issue, please bring it to my attention so we can resolve it quickly.
Okay, uh, thank you. Same question for Jody.
Repeat question.
Yes, sir. Uh, what do you believe that the role of a City Council member should be?
First off, as a City Council member, you gotta remember that you're the voice for the people that you represent. Uh, you've gotta be able to listen to them and I'm not a person, and I've run this campaign throughout it, going to people door to door. I'm not a behind the computer, on the telephone kind of person. I like to see people face to face because you understand where they're coming from, you understand their passion, you know, are, are they dealing with struggles that a lot of us don't know about? We need to be aware of that. And then when you get into the City Council, you're managing their money. It's for the City of Longview, but you've gotta take the time to make sure you're using it correctly, you're using it wisely, not just for District 5, but for the whole City of Longview. And if it works, you, you work to make it happen. When you get in behind the closed doors, it's all right to be activated, to have a different voice. Uh, there's a lot of diverse actions that people have and conversations, but when you come out together, like I said, it's a united front representing for Longview. You've gotta be one voice and once a decision is made, and we've just made some battles, but once you make a decision, you come out and you support it as a group. You can't have a division among a group of people that's supposed to be the leaders for the City of Longview. And that's what I believe the City Councilman's role. We're just here to represent you, the people, and do the job in the best of our ability.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, so this one, we will start with Jody. So the City of Longview has set aside 6.5 million from its reserves to fund a new pool at Stamford Park. Do you support or oppose this project and why?
I've gotta say something about that project going back. I visited with Scott Hare and the Garcia that pool a few years before the lease was coming up. I firmly believed that vote should have never occurred the first time it happened in October. And the reason for that was there was problems addressed then that he and I discussed, hey, we could sit here and turn it into a splash pad, reduce our workforce, a lot less maintenance, be handy to do. He said, oh, we can sit here and we can change some of the vats, we can redo the pumps, bring it up to speed and it'd be good again. But instead, we hastily, like I said, reacted. We made a decision in October that we were gonna just do away with that pool closing. We're gonna invest 3.3 million dollars into the pool down at Stamford Park. 3.3 turned into 6.5 million dollars. Now, you've already told the people of Longview, this is what we're gonna do for the people of Stamford Park. You better go ahead and support what you've told. If you start making decisions, even though they may not be popular with people, you can't go back on what you're telling and promising to individuals of, of Longview. And that's where being proactive, working ahead, having a plan, doing a study before you make a decision to close something, say, now what are we gonna do? That's where it comes in handy. So should it have ever come to a vote in October? Absolutely not, not without some discussion beforehand, because there was a lot of other options. Now you've left the northwest area of Longview completely without water service, our, our pool, stop.
Thank you. All right. Now Michelle, same question.
We'll repeat the question.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, the City has set aside 6, 6.5 million from its reserves to fund a Stamford Park pool. Do you support or oppose this project and why?
First of all, I'd just like to say that I do sympathize and empathize with everyone who was saddened by the closing of any of our pools. I actually myself learned how to swim at the Pine Tree Pool and I voted no on all the pool measures, Pine Tree and Stamford for one basic reason. Again, it goes to our two buckets in the city, our general fund and our general reserve funds. Pools are, are recurring and a recurring expense. General reserve funds, which is the funds in question, are meant for stabilizing the tax rate, public safety, critical infrastructure, and things of that nature. I voted no, not because I don't want pools or because I don't think we need them. In fact, our Comprehensive Plan says we need them, but I believe that we should put it to the vote of the citizens. In fact, we're having elections starting tomorrow, so why not put it on the ballot for citizens to empirically tell us if this is how they want to spend $6 million of their savings? I think it's critically important to listen to the needs of our constituents and as I've been going door to door as well as doing my job over the last three years, um, I've talked to thousands of people and the sentiment remains the same. They want us to focus on our critical infrastructure. We have had discussions over pools for over a year at NACM and what we discovered is that we have so many other things that take precedence, like pay raises for our sanitation team, for our public works employees, for our EMS, our public safety officers. We have a fleet replacement program that's a decade behind, uh, that predates me, that really needs to be addressed. Uh, there are so many critical infrastructure needs, especially all the asphalt roads in my district that still need addressing, that I think should take precedence. Uh, with the win for District 5 is a win for Longview and vice versa. The way that, uh, our funds and our pooling works, as any business, it goes into the general fund, we then have priority meetings where we talk about with the city managers where our budget priorities are, and my budget priorities are always on safety, streets, signs, and sewers. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. And we will start with, uh, Michelle on this question. So a follow-up question to the one that I just asked, are you satisfied with the city's plans for its aquatic facilities and why or why not?
I think our plans could always use some help and I think it's important to have community output. Uh, that's why we did have a park study, we had the comprehensive plan, and overwhelmingly people do want aquatic services, especially to either teach and learn to swim or to help our elderly with some of those services. I think government's role is not to erect new structure or get into the entertainment business, but I think it is our role to provide essential services and that counts with learn to swim and helping our elderly have some proactive services. Uh, you know, LISD did recently empirically vote on their bond, so I may be open to maybe considering a partnership with them. As well as we're getting a brain splash pad in Spring Hill, like I said, we're finishing out on completing some of those 2018 bond projects. I thought really hard to make sure that we're getting a lot of those things done in our district. As well as where government fails and there's a gap, that's what we rely on, community partners. That's how we're grateful for all the great community partners in our district, whether that's Gap or Eastman, even though that's not in my district, they're still putting in a huge investment here into Longview. So I really do believe that we need a lot of different things. In fact, I've heard pickleball a lot as I've gone and talked to citizens. So right there at Panther Park, we're working on redevelopment. So coming soon, that may either be a pickleball court or it may be some wildlife vegetation to get some grants from the state. So we are actively working on development, redevelopment, as well as quality of life projects in District 5. So a vote for me is a vote to continue all the progress forward that we're doing. We have so much momentum, we can't stop now, so we need you to vote early tomorrow so we can make sure that we can keep it up.
Same question to Jody. Are you satisfied with the city's plans for its aquatic field facilities, why or why not?
Well, I wanna look at something that Michelle just brought up there, uh, you know, maybe a partnership with LISD. First off, the residents of District 5, the residents on this, on Pine Tree, matter of fact, they didn't vote for an aquatic center at LISD. They're not, why should they be supporting the operational cost of that facility? First off, you need to have a facility that is strictly for the public, that's run through the City of Longview. You can have partnerships on other things. Coming from experience as an athletic director, I know for a fact we could not get into Longview ISD's pool to rent it at any time during that time we had a swimming, we had to go to Laterra. When you do products or projects within the city in regards to park, you better think of the young and the old alike. I'm 100% in believing that every kid should swim, but I also know it's financially, it's expensive for us to, the, the chemicals alone, it, it's went up three times the price in the last two years. Uh, staffing has been an issue. I know we've had to close pools to bring lifeguards down to another area. That becomes a problem. And when people are planning on taking their kids and you get there in a pool flood because we didn't have enough staff for the day, that's an issue. Uh, we need to be, like I said, we need to be cognizant. We gotta prepare for the people that's young and the people that's old. Give them activities to do. She mentioned pickleball, absolutely, that's a big swing going around, but you've got kids who enjoy, or excuse me, elderly people who enjoy going to parks and walking. You better make them safe for when people get there. It doesn't matter what location in the city they are, it's gotta be easy and accessible. It's gotta be safe and secure for both the elderly and the youth, because a lot of times we allow kids to go by themselves.
Okay, uh, thank you. We will start with, uh, Jody on this question, I believe. How would you bring more economic development to northwest Longview?
Well, when you talk about the economic development, one of the things that you've gotta rely on, you've gotta rely on the people at the Chamber of Commerce, you also have to rely on Letco and people that has already established in our community and business. You know, you have training and you have potential business. And we've got some areas in, in Longview that there's businesses that are trying, is they're expanding and they're growing. That's a great place to bring them to. Like I said earlier, people's gotta be cognizant and support these businesses when they go there. Sometimes you just can't have a business that takes foot traffic every day. You've gotta have traffic that provides a service so they don't rely on people to come in and spend their money at the right place. Me, I'm cognizant when I step into Grooms Art Room before I go to Home Depot and those. They don't have it, that's where I go, but you've gotta support them. Um, Steve, when you're talking about potential businesses, now that's where Letco and the Chamber of Commerce comes in and say, you know what, we've got somebody who's interested, they're gonna be, they'll fit the need up in District 5. Because there's things that need to go in the north and the south industrial part. There's things that need to go on 259 or in South Longview down by the I-20 corridor. That's 100% true, but you've gotta fight for the things to build. Again, going back to help Spring Hill ISD with their tax base, you're gonna have to have some more commercial, uh, revenue coming in there. You can't just keep applying it on citizens and taxpayers every single day.
Same question.
Okay, this is actually a multi-pronged approach. So in District 5, we have development, we have over, uh, 1,200 acres in the north business park, however, under 80 acres of it is infallible. Why? Because we need over 100 acres of continuous track for big business to come in. However, when I've reached out to various citizens and gone door to door, I realized that, um, you know, we have prevented urban sprawl by strategic planning and that strategic planning is very important because we're making sure that the residential corridors don't have too much high commercial. Uh, we're prohibiting heavier uses right by residential and that's what the citizens want. And if they don't, it would take a change in general land use and I'm happy to go that way if that's what the citizens want. I actually used to be the liaison to LEO as well as the Chamber of Commerce that was appointed here. So I actually have a map of our zoning here showing some of the critical issues we have in District 5. One of them being that we have a lot of agricultural and flood plain. The other, we have a pre-development, a no-joelr model of development. So we do have some redevelopment happening along the, uh, Loop 21, McCann, and Gilmore corridors and they take some outside of the box thinking. A lot of stuff we've thought about actually as I've gone on inner-city trips with the Chamber was that we actually need TERS tax increment reinvestment notes and BIDs, Business Improvement Districts. So that's something that I'm actually actively working on with LEO to make sure that we're, uh, implementing in our district. Some things that I've heard in our district is that people want business. We actually have business all over Spring Hill, all the way from small business to the Gap that provides $175 million in capital investment, 125 million net benefit to the city even after benefits, as well as over 17, 1,700 jobs out of the 5,000 jobs are located in District 5. So District 5 is growing, it's booming, and I need you to vote for me to be likely to make sure that we can keep the momentum going.
All right, thank you.
Last question.
Next question, all right. Um, all right. Excuse me. Uh, so we'll start with, uh, Michelle on this one. Nice question. Uh, under what circumstances would you support a tax increase if, if any?
Um, as you have seen in the last council meetings, I actively oppose any and all tax increases. Um, I don't really foresee that there would be one that I would, um, actively pursue. Um, however, I know that there are times where, you know, critical infrastructure, roads, things of that nature, those are funded by tax dollars. So I actively look for creative approaches, whether that's through non-matching grants and encouraging people like Laura, who does a great job for our department, making sure that we have that critical funding, um, as well as making sure that we see all the resources available to us as a city. Um, Longview is winning awards, not just in the Governor's Cup, but in various other, uh, LEO's being invited to have a seat at the table because of all the economic development we have happening. So, um, I foresee that Longview will continue to attract new businesses, which will hopefully keep some of those tax increases away. That's why I encourage any and all business, you're welcome here in Longview, you're welcome in District 5. Uh, we need you to improve our quality of life, we need you to bring better jobs into our city and so, um, I'm just grateful to do my part and fight against tax increases and, um, just be a liaison to our citizens, to our great community.
Next question for Jody.
Yes. So tax increases at this time, have you seen the property tax increases? Uh, and those members on that appraisal board are appointed by our City Council. You need to be aware of what we're doing to our people out there. There's people right now in situations, they can't afford any IRM, but when you've got a landlord who's, he's getting hit with the appraisal taxes, we, all of a sudden, it changes hands and people are forced out. We start dealing with other issues that the City of Longview has already shown they don't wanna deal with, uh, in regards to homelessness, and that's not gonna go away. So you've gotta be aware, sometimes all the nice, super, you know, 6.6 million, who I say, that's exorbitant. To spend that money there when we could spend it on some other areas is necessary. But that's the commitment that we made to those people down at Stamford Park, is that we were gonna do that. We owe it to them to keep our work, uh, until we can get things under control, our budgets handled the right way, be financially responsible, be transparent with our financial spending right now. It's hard to get answers. I still recall, Steve, you're in the, the audience here, we asked the question, what's the total price if we lease a fire truck at the end versus if we purchase it? We still don't have that answer. Why can't we give honest, transparent answers to the people of Longview? It's about time, it's their money we're spending, let's paint it correct. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity, I wanna be a, I wanna be the person to say things for you, to be your voice. I'm not a politician by heart, I'm just the man of who I am. And I, I'm honest, I've got integrity, and I've got transparency. Be fair about our money, be conscious on what you do for our people.
Okay, uh, now we will do the, uh, closing remarks and we'll start with, with Jody.
All right. Again, I'll reemphasize what I just said, I'm not a politician, but yeah, here I have found myself in this role. And the more I walk around and visit with people, the more it frustrates me that some people don't even know what's going on, but everybody's got a statement they, they question about their appraisals, their taxes, what are we doing with our money at pool? What's happened to our bond project? And those are concerns that I have. And that's when I sat here and I retired and I watched it for three years, it all of a sudden became, what has my councilman done for me for the last three years? And I, I'm not a name dropper, I've not been involved in a lot of different programs, but one of the things I do is I listen to people, I investigate the decisions that's gotta be made, and then when it comes to working within a group, City Council and Mayor or private organization we're trying to lure, lure in, or working with our fire department, police department, you've gotta listen to them and listen to the problems. Too often times, we don't listen to the people that unlock the doors and turn on the lights. We think we know best in making the right decisions. You've gotta take that time and that effort to get to know them, understand their concerns, where they're coming from, then you walk out together and it's a unified decision that you make, and when you're done, whether you're happy with the decision or not, you walk out and you support it for the betterment of Longview. And, I thank my, thank my family for being here. I put them in a situation that I know they wasn't, uh, expecting, it's a death life. I said, broad shoulders and a hard head, I don't know, I've had a servant attitude, I've been involved in trying to see kids grow and achieve their maximum success, and I want to see Longview be the premier East Texas city that it was when I come 34 years ago.
All right, thank you. Michelle, closing remarks.
First of all, I just wanna thank everyone so much for the outpouring support, everyone here, uh, everyone at home, thank you so much for all the citizens. I've been so grateful to represent you and I hope to continue to represent you as we work together. as we work together on casting your vision for what you want District Five to be. Uh, I'm not a politician. I am a public servant. I've been since I was twelve years old and actively involved in our community. Uh, because I care about our community, I care about implementing the things that you care about most and that's why I'm running for reelection. I'm running for reelection because I think that it matters to have your voice heard. And that's senior tax dollars at work. And taxpayers wanna see their tax dollars at work in safety, streets, signs, and sewers. I've been grateful to be on various boards that do help with our homeless, like the Longview Community Ministries. I've also been a court-appointed special advocate with PASA. I've been a part of the Chamber and various other institutions ever since I was really young. Why we care about you, I care about Longview. This is my mission. This is my passion, is to listen to you, make sure that your needs are being heard. Thank you again so much to every single citizen who continues to reach out to me. I look forward to continuing to resolve your issues. I know we got a couple of things going on in our district right now that we're fixing. Um, some roads, some different, um, drainage issues, um, as well as some safety issues, making sure that we have police presence in various areas. And so my role is to represent you. I'm also grateful to represent you on two committees with the East Texas Council of Governments, the Brownsville Committee and the Executive Committee, where I'm fighting for federal funding to make sure that our, uh, region does stay the best and the most, uh, resourceful and valuable, uh, place in East Texas. Rural regions around us look to us for leadership because we are paving the way in economic development and in leadership. So thank you for allowing me to be your voice and I continue to do the, uh, vote to do that. Thank you. As we conclude this evening's forum, I wanna extend our sincere appreciation to all the candidates for their time and to you, the community, for being a part of this important civic dialogue. Remember, early voting starts tomorrow, April twenty-second, so please make your voice heard. A special thank you to the Longview Chamber of Commerce, Longview News Journal, and Longview Co-Work People TV for hosting tonight's forum. We hope you leave better informed and inspired to vote. Thank you and good night.